We have a call. The meeting is our call order. Would you please invite the deputations into the room and please also invite the officials into our room? Good morning, please take your seats accordingly, and you can find your nameplates. Good morning, Mr. Mr. President. Ah,林日丰校长第三排啊 仲差幾多位啊，仲差兩位啊 好 Good. Good morning. Thank you very much for coming to our meeting amid Taiwan signal number three. May I welcome the government officials, the individuals and groups for coming to our meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to listen to the views of the deputations in respect of the teacher-to-student ratio and second, as teacher-to-class ratio in student, in secondary schools. You can put on the earpiece. Channel zero is the floor, channel, channel one is Cantonese, and channel two is English. Eighteen individuals and groups have come to give their views. Your submissions, written submissions, have been sent to the administration. I'd like to remind the representatives and individuals that their oral submissions and written submissions are not protected by the Legislative Council powers and privileges ordinance. I will ask the Secretary for Education to make a briefing first, and then I will invite the individuals and groups to speak. And each individual or each group will not be given more than five minutes, and when you hear the bell, you have to stop. Please be concise and precise in making your presentation, and we welcome you making your submission in writing. Thank you. Let me send them please. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the panel, and principals and teachers attending the meeting, good morning, everybody. I know that you are very concerned about manpower resources in the education sector. You are also concerned about the workload of teachers and also the difficulties of young teachers joining this service. We know your concerns, and we are happy to maintain contacts with you. We take this opportunity to listen to the voices of the education sector and the teachers in particular. Since the implementation of the NSS, we have kept communication with the education sector. Before the introduction of the NSS, we conducted an assessment on the workload of the teachers and conducted a wide consultation. In May 2005, when the report on NSS was published, the amended teacher-to-class ratio had been spelled out very clearly. In 2012-13 school year, we have already implemented the scheme and enhanced the teacher and class ratio from 1.9 to 2.0 for senior secondary levels. And we also give a recurrent grant to the senior levels, in particular in the area of liberal studies, and there can be flexibility among the schools. The teachers are working with the teachers. Education is a, is a task of educating people, and it's difficult to measure workloads by the number of sessions. Yet, to a certain extent, it is decided affected by the length of sessions, the nature of topics in classes, the number of students in a class, pedagogic methodology, teachers' assistance, and whether, and also additional teaching support. And there is wide variation among the schools, and it is difficult to use the number of sessions as the only indicator. Any change in curriculum will be a challenge to the schools. And the introduction of SBS and also caring for different types of students with lots of implications on the workload of teachers. In the early stage of implementing NSS, we did provide opportunity for teachers to prepare themselves and provide various cash grants. Say, for example, we have professional grants, we have transitional grants for NSS. We also organize refresher courses and professional enhancement courses. And we've also stepped up grants for senior secondary, for the senior secondary curriculum, so that the schools have more resources to deal with heavier workload with the introduction of NSS. We have also get, gave a one-off grant for the implementation of liberal studies. The NSS has been implemented since the 2009 and 10 school year. And we need time to consolidate the process and take stock of our experience. We conducted a review, and we confirmed that the NSS is progressing in a stable manner, and we will continue to enhance the content of the NSS curriculum, simplify school-based amendment, and the total number of teaching hours from 2,700 to 2,400 plus or minus 200 hours. And this will provide more flexibility to the schools. We think these short-term measures, once implemented, will help to reduce the workload of teachers and students significantly. To deal with the sudden decline in secondary one students, we introduce a number of measures and put in a lot of resources. In particular, the number of students for each class is reduced, or was reduced from 38 students per class to 34 students per class. In 2013-14 and the subsequent three years, we will adopt a school-based and district-based approach in reducing the number of students in Form 1 classes. By 2015-16, the number of students per class in Form 1 will be about 30 students. These are to reduce the ratio between teachers and students. Now that NSS is still in an early stage, the schools have to take stock of experience, and teachers will have, will have time to adjust to the changes. And afterwards, they will feel more at ease in implementing the NSS and the relevant curricula. I will continue to talk to the trade and provide resources. As for the recruitment of young teachers or entrance of young teachers, we have introduced a number of measures to deal with secondary one students, or the decline in secondary one student population. And this also has a bearing on enhancing the possibility of young teachers. There are teachers leaving the service by retirement, or for one, for retirement, or for one reason or another, and together with the future possible increase in population, there are better opportunities in the future. As for, according to survey, among 6,300 teachers, 60% of them were recruited before the age of 27. We are of the view that there will be a gap in the experience of regular teachers. Mr. Ho of Cheng Yee, good morning. I have written a, an article, and I would like to respond to that as a school principal's assistant. He mentioned communication, listening, hearing, so on and so forth. As for the NSS, now the government officials go to, or rather, we are able to score higher points in international competition because of our heavy workload. Now, in the previous submission or previous hearing, I was the first to speak, and now this morning by coinci, by coincidence, I'm the first to speak. Now, it's because of the problem that we want to air our grievances. The flexibility of cutting the hours from 2,700 to 2,400, 2,700, 2,400, are something rather elusive.
Now, if you want me to finish 100 meter in 13 seconds, and if I do not lose weight, is that achievable? No. We've heard a lot of optimization plans, the reduction of the frequency of submitting academic results, etc. However, for this kind of measure, it would not save teachers a lot of time. So I hope the administration can give more explanation to me. I have a chart here with me. Well, earlier on, for junior secondary school, it was 1.3, and then for senior secondary school, 1.7, and for matriculation years, too. So for IT, woodwork, design, all these subjects, somebody would have to take care of them. And also for language teachers, there have been a lot of problems. And after a number of special measures, now we are facing the double cohort for junior secondary school, 1.7, senior secondary school, 1.9, and for matriculation, 2.3. Well, it seems that you have given us a lot of benefits, 1.9 to 2, and for junior secondary school, 1.7. So for all these figures, are these arbitrary figures? Or do you really have a sound reason to back them? I understand that many other representatives will speak about these today. So let me go back to my speaking notes. I know that in Macau in 2020, the class-to-teacher ratio will be 12.5. We are not envious of Macau because they have all sorts of benefits, and they have cash rebate to their citizens. However, I'm envious that they have good education policy, and when can our ratio achieve 2.5? Yes, I know that the secretary has a lot to handle. However, when we tell the international community about our NAS, our NSS, they have all implemented, and our students are of high quality. However, you have to bear something in mind, that is, frontline teachers have made huge efforts. And KK is here, I'm pleased to see him. On Thursday, we had a teacher seminar, and principals suddenly said that, well, now in the North District, suddenly there are 100 more school places. Now maybe our teachers can go there and teach for half a term, taking care of a school-based assessment, taking care of the complicated curriculum, etc. However, I would like to talk about 2.3 again. Now, in the past, there was the Hong Kong Certificate of Education Examination. And for UE as well as cultural subjects, 30 students a class, they are brilliant students. Now, I am teaching Form Secondary 6, is, that's a huge difference. You have to take care of each student. And you said that you spent a lot of money on reducing the number of people, etc. Now, for the TTPG, well, the money has been long gone. And you would say that, well, schools still have a lot of money. Well, it's lawful for us to save up those money. We are principals, we are gatekeepers, we cannot squander the money. Now, if we waste money, if we do that, please take away the surplus. And please don't stop giving us grants, because some schools have huge savings. Now, if a school has not hired a new teacher for 10 years, it's a serious, it's a serious problem. So I hope that the administration can start reviewing the teachers' establishments soon. Next, Mr. Yim Chee Sing from the 18th District Secondary School Principals Association. Well, I am in a hurry. I am going to a school to talk about teachers' workload. We will be talking about a huge pressure on teachers under the NSS system. Now, I'll speak on behalf of the schools of 18 districts. And we have submitted a letter to the secretary earlier on, it's about reviewing the establishment of teachers. I believe you might have read the letter. And now I would like to repeat the highlights. In the CE's policy address, some things very clear. That is, in two areas, the workload on teachers will be eased, and administrative support will be given to schools so that teachers would have more room to take care of students and to develop themselves professionally. Now, when we look at these resources, we see that the EDB and the Assessment Authority in 2012, when the DSEs implemented, a number of assessments have been made and also reviews have been conducted. However, for teaching resources review, we haven't seen it yet. Now, if there's any policy change in schools, of course, the principals would have to be there, and we also have our teaching staff there to help curriculum change. Now, for curriculum, there has been review, and for examination, there has been review, but for human resources, there has been no review. So is there a long-term policy for this? I hope we, I hope the EDB can commission an independent body to review the teaching establishments in schools, because now we are facing a lot of changes. And also at a education panel meeting, the EDB said that in 2005, it had reported to the LSGO. Now, because the number of students has declined, so that the resources will be allocated for other means. Now, for the NSS, now we are seeing more students, and also teachers would have to take care of the different abilities of different students. Secretary, you are responsible for human resources. Don't underestimate the work pressure on teachers. Now, they are facing the NSS curriculum, and they are facing a lot of problems. I can cite some examples. For example, school recruitment, school activities, her parents' issues, assessments, her personal, professional developments, meetings, etc. Teachers have to take part in all this. We are talking about frontline teachers. And we now have integrated education, etc., so they even have more workload. Now, after the first DSE, we discovered that there are still a lot of problems that we have to face. For example, differences in learning ability, teaching periods, difficult curriculum, and other learning experiences, of more administrative work, school-based assessments, several examination papers for one subject, etc. So all these are challenges. I think the EDB should review teachers' establishment as soon as possible, and try to find out whether this is reasonable, and if not, relevant measures should be implemented. Now, when the administration talked to us, they had another view of teaching resources review. Well, no matter what, the NSS has been implemented for four years, and now you have reviewed some other aspects. So I think the EDB should start reviewing teachers' establishments. I think this is only reasonable. So you should look at the manpower of teaching staff. And our association will respect a fair and just, as well as scientific-based review. We hope that the CE's vision can be realized as soon as possible. By doing so, our frontline teachers can work better for our students. A very famous academic, Paul Park, apartment said, well, he's actually a world-class academic. He's been to different countries, and he conducts a lot of reviews concerning education system. He says that for any educational reform, if our teachers have a huge workload and morale is low, and they paid not enough, then they also do a lot of work, and it is impossible to achieve educational reforms. So please pay more attention to our teachers. Thank you. Next, Grand Schools Council, Ms. Catherine Wong.
Catherine Wong, Principal of St. Mary's Canusian College, speaking for the Grand Schools Council. On this issue of class-to-teacher, or CT ratio, we are of the opinion that EDB is completely out of touch with frontline teachers. There is no need to compare the old and current CT ratio in an attempt to kid people that adequate human resources have been provided. You only need to look at the final number of teacher entitlement. Among schools receiving government aid in our council, all have a reduction in the actual number of teacher entitlement at a time when many schools are still struggling and groping under NSS. How are schools to offer more electives preferred by students? Comparing the old and current CT ratio is like comparing an orange with an apple. S4 and S5 in the new system are learning the same S6 curriculum. There are more students per class than S6 and S7 in the old A level, not to mention the much wider diversity among students. Various educational initiatives all need additional manpower. OLE, SBA, CCA, ECA, community service, field trips, camps, competitions, visits, overseas study trips, after-school tutorials, gifted programs, counseling, etc., etc. All need teacher input and supervision, and teachers get exploited and squeezed of overtime work, which has no pay and which is not accounted for in the formal timetable. Some funds are provided for some special projects, true, but schools may not have access to such funds. Take integrated education, for example. There are undercover SEN students whose parents refuse to reveal their identities to EDB. So schools are punished by getting discounted or no funds at all. What happens is that such students are given the care they need, but at the expense of our overworked teachers, and sometimes students as well. The liberal studies grant is very short-lived indeed. The subject nature of LS is very different from other subjects that is content needs to stay up to date and be forever updated. It's not like a teacher can prepare the materials and use them for 10 years, no, not even 10 months. Meaning that a better CT ratio is needed, not considering the IEs, which needs individual personal coaching. The English Enhancement Reis Fund, for example, runs for two to three years only. Any language expert will tell you that if Hong Kong wants to enhance her English standard, it surely takes more than two to three years. Teachers employed by grants are insecure, and they play musical chairs, jumping from school to school. Time and effort spent in interviewing, mentoring, and training them all go down the drain. They are not committed, and when they leave, they hurt students' feelings, drag down school morale, bringing more headaches than help. One aspect overlooked that is that secondary teachers need special subject expertise. Chemistry teachers cannot teach English and vice versa. The number of teachers needed do not just add up so conveniently into the prescribed magic ratios. Teachers are forced to teach or to learn to teach other subjects. So there is subject mismatch and a sacrifice of student learning. When the government is advocating fair and just corporate governance, we don't see it being practiced. We were told that the CT ratio could not be reviewed, because many schools which have optimized or cut classes now have spare teachers which EDB will mercifully tolerate for up to nine years. To cater for the drop in student numbers, many schools would be taking in fewer students, and the minimum number of students needed to open two classes is 26. For schools which cannot cut down on class number and student number, there is no spare teachers and no fewer students, but as many other obstacles as any other school to deal with. We would like to ask, where is the fairness? And because of incompatible and forever-changing policies, my own school is the hardest hit in this issue. As a through-train school, we need to take in all primary pupils for the coming year. We are forced to take in 40 students per class and to forfeit some of our entitled repeated, repeated places. A merciful deed which EDB has so gracefully bestowed upon us. Thank you very much. Where is the justice, may I ask? Schools having to cut students would be asking me the same question. Where is the justice? Honorable councilors, we have every reason for, to ask for a humble and more reasonable CT ratio, 1 to 2 for junior classes, 1 to 2.3 for senior classes, or better still, to be fair, cater for individual school needs. I regret having to deliver something so important for teachers like doing tongue twisters. Thank you very much.
Next is Mr. Stanley Ho of the Hong Kong Association of the Heads of Secondary Schools. Good morning, Chairman, members, and the Deputy Secretary. The association is very concerned about enhancement of education quality and long-term development of education in Hong Kong. We need to have direction, we need to have leadership. Teachers are the crucial elements in quality education. The government has the responsibility to ensure sustainability and stable development of the teaching team. International education studies have proved the importance of teachers in education. Now, the Education Bureau set up a committee and then published a report in 2006. Since then, the administration has not done anything to follow the matter up. Even if the education sector has asked for following up those recommendations, it seems that there is no progress. In 2007, there was a survey by the HKIAD on the workload of teachers. In 2010, there was another study. It is found that majority of teachers have to take up teaching duties as well as administrative duties. That has been confirmed by the school principals as well. Workload has increased substantially. Thirty-five percent said that workload increased substantially. More than 80% of the teachers were of the view that this is related to NSS and school-based assessment. In 2010, the Hong Kong Association published the survey report and collected the view of 151 schools. In 2011, now this booklet. Our association, together with the alliance of 18 district school principals, and another association, collected the views from 230 schools. In 2013, this one, this one. We've completed a survey on the new school, new secondary school system. And despite heavy workload of teachers, they've, we've collected 176 schools. Now, there is change in examination, change in school system, and there are change in curriculum. There are all kinds of demands put on teachers, and teachers find it difficult to deal with. Teachers don't have room, don't even have the energy or health to deal with wide variation among the students. Our association completed another survey on the 20th of this month. And then we also collected views in a forum. And then we also collected views in a forum participated by all the school principals in Hong Kong. We found that there is a serious gap between the government policy and the difficulties faced by schools under the N S S. If you look at the O E C D data twenty twelve, we can see that the ratio is fourteen point five to one. I think that the calculation is far, is not able to reflect the truth. It is to alarm the non-regular teachers and regular teachers together. These non-regular teachers are subject to conditions, and they can be taken away at any time. If we look at, you can check it in the internet. If we look at total staff, that is another number. Now, per one thousand, in a one thousand student school, teachers, teaching assistants, professional assistants, administrators and minor staff. If you look at the ratio, you found that Hong Kong schools is higher than the O E C D in one item, and that is the minor staff, the number of minor staff. As for teaching assistants, professionals, support administrators and teachers, our numbers are far lower than our neighboring countries or developed countries. As for number of teachers, O E C D, seventy-four point five per thousand students. E U, twenty-one countries, eighty-one point eight. Hong Kong, the regular establishment, fifteen-nine. We are just eighty percent of the O E C D standard. Taiwan and Macau, the number of sessions of teachers reduced, twenty sessions for non-class teachers. If we don't change our teacher to class ratio, how can we provide quality education to our students? As for the recruitment of new teachers, Chairman, give me one or two minutes. I hope we've received the complaints of young people. This year, they apply for teachers. They are very frustrated. P G D E, up till now, only one has found a job for those graduated from P G D E. Now, the secretary is a human resource expert. He should give us advice on how to deal with that. Now, for the quality of education in Hong Kong to implement the N S S and to provide quality education to all students, I think that's a shared objective. We firmly believe that the government is duty-bound and increase the teachers, the number of teachers and review the teacher to class ratio. Thank you. Next. President of the Hong Kong Liberal Studies Teachers Association, Ms Hui. Mr Chairman, members, Ms Ng, the secretary, school principals and teachers. I speak on behalf of the Hong Kong Liberal Studies Teachers Association on the teacher in class ratio. Liberal Studies is a very crucial subject in the N S S. Different subjects have their own special features. And let me speak on our subjects. We have to teach very new issues. We need to update our teaching materials all the time. And we need to understand new developments in various issues. We adopt a multi-pronged approach in thinking. And if we are, we need to obtain different kinds of perspectives, and we need to have ample time to discuss matters with various and various issues with the students so the students can have the ability to analyze and interpret various social issues. As for S B A, many schools have been probing or feeling their way through, and they now have got some results. But these results are hard-earned, and this is one through various detailed discussion. And in fact, topical studies and special studies and researches require time, not only of the students, but also the teachers as well. But this is a new subject, as I said earlier. It has been implemented for several years. And in comparison with other subjects in the N S S, we are still feeling our way through. Many teachers who are teaching liberal studies teach other subjects. For example, I teach history and Chinese history, and I was transferred to teach liberal studies. I have to learn while doing it. We have a new team, or rather, we have new recruits. Schools have Bachelor of Education courses specializing in liberal studies. Now, there are fresh graduates. They are new, they have a different background. They know the teaching and learning of liberal studies. They are really the experts. But they can't, they can't get a teaching post. They can't even get a teaching assistant post. Why is it so? Why is there such a serious problem in planning? When the schools started this course four years ago, did they know the current situation will happen? If they can't be a teaching assistants, then they may get into education-related jobs, for example, in the publication sector. But will there be a gap in experience? Will there be a gap in manpower in the future as far as liberal studies is concerned? Let me now turn to the following important areas, as it is in my submission. Next year, the grants for liberal studies will be stopped. And there will be a deduction of zero point zero five in another source of fund. We know that the schools are working. And then group studies, small group studies will have to go. And the number of students, teachers-to-student ratio will increase, or rather, the teacher-to-student ratio will decline. And in fact, we need more support. As for the non-recurring grants to liberal studies, we know that it's a non-recurring grant. But we have, we have the need to have these. And these grants is, I know that it's a one-off grant. I think the bureau has to come up with a long-term supporting measure. Now, and there is another grant which will be cut by zero point zero five. And will that affect the schools and also liberal studies in particular? And there's a need to conduct a review on small class teachings, small class teaching and form a long-term policy. Next is Mr Cheng of the Labour Party. Population growth in Hong Kong is slowing down. The number of secondary school students is going down. The administration should take this opportunity to increase the number of teachers and improve the teacher-to-class ratio. And the administrative duties of teachers should be reduced. Yet, the government is cutting the number of teachers in classes. There are no new openings to recruit young teachers. As for the number of sessions taught by teachers, as said by my previous speakers, Hong Kong's number of sessions taught by Hong Kong teachers are more than our neighboring countries. They also have to do preparation beforehand. They have to do, to mark papers and conduct assessments. And then they also have other duties in caring for students. That should be. I think the workload of teachers are getting heavier and heavier. Therefore, there's a need to increase number of teachers, improve the teacher-to-class ratio, maintain a reasonable number of teachers so the schools have adequate manpower to deploy. The teacher-to-ratio, teacher-to-student ratio should be improved so as to enhance teaching and learning in the long term. When there aren't enough vacancies to attract young teachers. And in the future, when experienced teachers retire, there will be not enough teachers to fill the experience gap. And this gap is a serious threat to the long-term development of education in Hong Kong. The Labour Party is the view that teachers should be given the room to focus on learning, teaching and learning, a chance to enhance themselves and respond to changes in society. Yet, because of the heavy workload at present, the teachers do not have room to do all this.
And for contract teachers, if they are to replace regular teachers, this actually cannot solve the problem for long because it's just an ad hoc measure, and it cannot provide a stable work environment for teachers. And the gap in teacher succession is also threatening education. So the class-to-teacher ratio should be improved. Otherwise, the problem will only deteriorate. Thank you. Next, Professional Development Association for Liberal Studies, Vice Chairman, Mr Ho Kahim.
Good morning. I would like to talk about the special features of liberal studies and its relationship with class-to-teacher ratio. Now, liberal studies is different from other subjects because we have to analyze current affairs. And that's why the Education Bureau has not vetted our textbooks. Some of the textbooks are of poor quality. And the teachers would have to design their own teaching materials. They have to update their teaching materials, et cetera. Although the Education Bureau has been providing materials to us, we have to compile our own teaching materials. Well, for designing our own teaching materials, actually, these materials are time-limited because we have to monitor current affairs very closely. We have to know the topic itself, and then only by doing so can we enhance the student's interest in the subject, our students' interest in the subject. And for designing a teaching material, it's not about half-day work. It will take several days for preparing a set of materials. And if we do not have enough teachers, well, we will have to teach more teaching periods. And also, it's very difficult for us to produce high-quality teaching materials. And also, we adopt a student-focused approach when we teach this subject. A lot of schools would like to have group teachings, and it has made use of the Liberal Studies Curriculum Support Grant to recruit teachers and teaching assistants for this subject. However, the grant has ended. So schools would have to lay off teachers, and this affects education a lot. And the government says some other grants can be used for this purpose. However, other grants would have their own purposes, and other subjects are also fighting for the grants. So this would not directly resolve the problem for liberal studies. And also for I E S, this is a special subject. So students, they can learn from other subjects, and then they can incorporate their knowledge under this study. So this is something that we have to attach importance to. The teachers do not only play the role of an assessor, but they are also teachers and they are also instructors. They would also have to teach students individually, and this is very time-consuming. It's just, it's not that I see a student at one time when he's doing his assignment. I will have to meet the student on a regular basis and very frequently. So if we do not have enough teachers, this will have a direct impact on the number of students to be taught by a teacher, and this will significantly increase our workload. Now, the Examination Authority has revised the I E S homework. However, the reduction in homework doesn't mean that teachers or students would have to do less work. So this may not resolve the problem concerning workload. And if we look at our old academic structure, now, the students had to sit for form five examination. Their quality was higher. And at that time, the Education Bureau was able to achieve a ratio of one-two, two-point-three. Now, it's only one-two-two. So the situation is worse than. And teachers have to take care of diverse students, and there's a lot of leftovers. So we think that the class-to-teacher ratio should be revised. The government should review this ratio and adjust it as early as possible. And also, for the liberal studies curriculum support grants, it should continue. Only with this grant can we do more work and help more students. And then we can have a standing mechanism for having students.
Next, Democratic Alliance for the Betterment and Progress of Hong Kong, Ms Vincent Chan is the Deputy Spokesperson for Education Affairs. Thank you. Well, for the D A B, we want to make six points concerning class-to-teacher ratio. Now, with regard to the N S S curriculum, now the students in each class has increased. And the gap is getting bigger and bigger. In the old system, the ratio was better, and now the pressure on teachers has increased. The education sector has always asked for a review of teacher establishment. However, now there's no change, and there are only two teachers per class. So you have not listened to the voices of the education sector. And also, from S four to S six, we want to increase the ratio. Originally, it's one-point-seven and two-point-three. However, under the N S S, we have to take care of diverse students, and the ratio has gone down to two. So you do not know how much pressure the teachers have now. And also, some teachers have told us that they actually want the old class-to-teacher ratio be reinstated. That is one-point-seven and two-point-three. And also, for secondary school class-to-teacher ratio, you have to look at all the relevant factors. The secretary has also mentioned them just now. We don't just look at the ratio. We have also to look at the ecology, the number of teachers needed for reforms, et cetera. Just now, we've heard that the teaching load is really heavy, and teachers have to do a lot of things. So to implement the reform policies, you need teachers. And they are facing a lot of duties. The government is giving catch grants to schools. However, this should not be mixed up with class-to-teacher ratio. Schools can make use of some of these funds to employ teachers. However, these grants are different each year, and it's not stable. So for grants in class-to-teacher ratio, these are two issues, and you should not mix them. And now, the ratio is one-point-seven and two-point-something. And for the voluntary optimized class, this is just a temporary measure. And later on, things may change. So if there is a shortage of manpower, there will be a problem because there may not be enough vacancies for teachers to get promoted. And the number of G M teachers may drop. So if posts at higher ranks are deleted when a senior teacher retires, then the junior teachers may not have the chance to be promoted. Thank you, Chairman. Next, Hong Kong Subsidized Secondary School Council, Mr James Lan Yefat is the chairman. Chairman, members, good morning. For the Hong Kong Subsidized Secondary School Council, I'm speaking on behalf of them. We hope that the E D B can establish an independent review
we hope that the EDP can establish an independent review committee as early as possible. It should review the existing class-to-teacher ratio in a fair and just manner as soon as possible. And according to the findings, you should make improvements accordingly. Now, when we calculate the manpower in schools, there are two methods. First, you look at the number of class and the class-to-teacher ratio, and then you look at the number of regular teachers. And then there should be special policies for employing more teachers. For example, for some entry schools, maybe you can increase the number of teachers, but this is special policies. And also, there can be a time-limited grants. Such grants can be used on employing teachers and ancillary staff. Under the NSS curriculum, how is this calculated? Now, on the 17th of April this year, the Education Panel was given such a paper. In 2005, the LACCO was told that for the NAS, a number of measures will be implemented, and it is implemented in accordance with the drop in student numbers. In 2009, the NSS curriculum was implemented. And when it comes to calculating the number of teachers, you should look at all the classes in Hong Kong and all the teachers in Hong Kong, and then you make a calculation, and then you can get a reference figure. And these reference figures should be used for all your other calculations. In other words, in the first three years of NSS curriculum, that is, 2009 to 2012, in junior secondary school, each class 1.7 teachers, senior secondary schools 1.9, matriculation classes 2.3. And now, junior secondary school 1.7, senior secondary school 2. This is calculated in accordance with the old formula. So we would like to ask a question. Now, for the present class-to-teacher ratio, is it reasonable? And when it comes to calculating manpower, as I said just now, our manpower establishment is calculated in accordance with the old formula, so it is outdated, and there is no increase in manpower. And when it comes to education reform, it should be student-focused. This should be the core of Hong Kong's education reform. The EDP also encourages schools to allow students to have more subject choices so that students can work towards their interests. So we agree to this. Unfortunately, without increasing manpower, it is very difficult to implement all these reforms concerning education examination. I'm sure teachers are under huge pressure because of this. Just now, my colleagues have told you so. Teachers now have to face paradigm shifts in education in order to enhance the efficiency of their students. And at the same time, for those who have to teach in senior secondary levels, they are facing more students in a class, in particular, English, Chinese, and Liberal Studies. And also, they have to take care of the different levels of students, and they have to take care of SBA, other learning experience, different profiles of students and archives of students, and also a number of other tasks. So when it comes to nurturing students, when teachers are faced with so many challenges, they are really under huge pressure. The government said that it's been giving us extra resources. Yes, for special policies, cash grants have been given to schools. For example, Liberal Studies, you have Liberal Studies Curriculum Support Grant. However, this is a time-limited grant. So it has brought about instability to our manpower arrangements. As for recurrent grants, we have different grants. Yes, they are helpful, but not sufficient. Chairman, please allow me to finish my speech. So when it comes to the fairness of policies, in 2009 to 2012, the government has launched a number of measures. We call it the 2-2-1 option. And for these options, extra teachers can be kept until 2019 and 2016. However, these are just temporary measures. They only cover schools which suffer from a reduction in classes. For other schools, they may not benefit as they do not get any extra support from the EDP. So this is unfair to these schools, and it's also an unreasonable arrangement. We would like to make some suggestions.
In April 2013, the Education Bureau published its report on NSS. The emphasis on the school-based assessment, teaching hours, and other subjects. But the review on teaching human resources has not been covered. The administration should conduct a comprehensive review on the human resource requirement of implementing NSS. Because of the decline in the number of students, some schools are allowed to have extra human power resources, but not everyone is treated equally. The government should know the variation in the number of students. View is that the administration should have a short-term, medium-term, and long-term planning, invest suitable resources, stabilize the teaching sector so the teachers will have more room to nurture their students. We finally would like to make the following two points. Now, there is the NSS, and there should be a new calculation. But the new calculation is conversion from the old formula. The old formula has been used for more than 20 years and has not been reviewed comprehensively to keep pace with changes in society and family structure. There's a need to care for the students. There's a need to deal with new workload from NSS. The cash grants are only time-limited and are only related to certain policies. The schools cannot have medium-to-long-term manpower planning. Our association hopes that the administration will form an independent class-teacher ratio review committee or survey committee. It should review whether the establishment in the schools is adequate, and the schools should be given adequate manpower and so that the teachers can take care for the students. We respect an evidence-based approach. We respect the outcome of an evidence-based and transparent study. We hope that the Bureau will honor the promise made by Mrs. Yi Leng during his electioneering. There should be a suitable increase in number of teachers so that teachers have more room to care for their teachers and participate in their professional development. Next is Mr. Peter Yu of the Southern District Joint Skills Conference.
Good morning, Chairman, government officials, members of the panel, ladies and gentlemen. Now, in reviewing the CTE ratio, we should look at the work of teachers, the work to be handled by regular teachers. We should not use the... We should not mix that with the resources for specific policies, and we should not confuse that issue with time-limited grants. We should look at whether there are adequate teachers to achieve what we are required to do. With regard to the changes in the teaching scenario, the ratio set in the 1990s are not adequate to meet rising demand. The Education Bureau should provide adequate number of teachers so that teachers can continue to bring about the benefits arising from education reform. Well, I would like to point out that since the education reforms in 2000, schools are facing structural changes. There are five major areas. There is a change in the basic demand of pedagogy. We require students to learn on all fronts. We break the barrier of the school premises. We go all the way out to learn, and there is a change in teaching paradigm. The teachers are not just transmitting knowledge, but students are taught how to learn on their own. And there is also a change in the approach of learning and the pedagogic approaches. The change in NSS also changed the workload of teachers. The school place allocation system has been changed. The medium of instruction has also been changed, and there is a wide variation among teachers, among students within a class, and workload is therefore increases. And the problems encountered by young people lump into the schools, we are to deal with various youth problems, just like, for example, drug-taking, family problems of students, students addicted to internet serving, so on and so forth. Teachers have to handle that. And teachers also have to handle food safety, procurement issues, some school maintenance, procurement, tree management. They even act as publicity, they have to do publicity. They have to even act as tour guides. Teachers have to do all that. Their workload is very heavy, and yet the support they have is just short-term cash grants. Sometimes, the Education Bureau says that just reallocation of resources, restructuring, re-engineering a workflow will help to solve the problem. Teachers are just humans. They have 24 hours only. They have two hands only. They cannot deal with everything at one goal, and they cannot work around the clock every day. They need to be given room to enhance themselves in order to benefit the students. Since 2009, there is the NSS. The CTE ratio, in fact, means a decline of regular teachers by two or three per school. Chairman, just give me a little bit more time. Well, please be quick. It's easy to know whether there are adequate teachers. There are two areas. The school use other sources of funding. Say, for example, they freeze the posts of one teacher, or they use the resources of one teacher to employ two teachers. Now, if the teachers do not prepare their classes, don't contact their parents, if they don't participate, they don't lead students in extracurricular activities, would that work? Of course, it won't work. We don't have the resources. There's a need to increase the regular number of teachers. I know that even if I give you 50 minutes, you will not be able to complete your presentation on CTE ratio. Next is Mr. Yu Fei of People Power. I'm asked by the People Power to give their view on this. Now, concerning the... And I have no objection to their future comments. I've heard about the arguments on CTE ratio, and I support the increase in number of teachers. If there are too many students in one class, it will not be effective. I've taught under the old system and also under the new system. And the A-level classes are different from the new Form 6, new secondary 6 under NSS. You need to achieve a certain objective, and you need to provide an adequate number of teachers. Do you want teachers to teach in their own specialties? Or you require teachers to teach in other subjects which they have not specialized in? You need to have a policy. You need to form a view. You need to have certain values, and then you have to provide the teachers accordingly. So you need to set your targets clearly. As for caring for learning variations or variations in learning ability, there are different approaches. Sometimes, it's rather weird. Some schools have the view that by working on the materials, by working on the examinations, they can deal with variation in learning. They don't have teaching assistants. They ask the teachers to double their workloads. They ask the teachers to draw up less difficult teaching materials and less difficult examination papers. That doesn't work. We really need to have a targeted approach, and we need to reduce the workload of teachers on other regular subjects in order to give room to the students to care for variation in learning capability. The schools have to... The schools think that if they just redo their teaching materials every year, that will care for the variation in learning abilities. If students have special needs, are tested on less difficult papers, that will not do. Let me now turn to Liberal Studies. Some have commented on the curriculum design. The framework of Liberal Studies is rather complicated. It seems they try to be liberal, and therefore, there is no definite answer. And it's difficult. So the subject of Liberal Studies is rather elusive. Well, in fact, you can be broad, but you can't be deep, and you shouldn't be deep. There are certain subjects that should, there are certain items or issues that should be mandatory, and there are certain items or issues that should be voluntary. I think there should be a clear definition on that. Next is Madame Winnie Y of the Hong Kong Provocational Schools Council. Teachers suffer from heavy pressure under the N S S. In the old A-level classes, the ratio is two-point-three, and each class had only thirty students. Now, under N S S, each class has more than thirty students. They have to prepare for university entrance examinations. Nearly all students are promoted to Form Six, and therefore there is wide variation among the students. And the T C ratio is just two, not two-point-three. So it's unfair to the teachers. Concerning the teachers outside the regular establishment, how many of them are they? How many government school or aided schools do not have teachers outside the regular establishment? And you know the problem if they give you the number. Now, we have a heavier workload, we, students have to have other learning experiences, they have liberal studies, and yet we don't have added resources. What is given is just time-limited grants in small amounts. And schools need to save up certain money because we don't have enough teachers. We need to make use of our resources to recruit additional teachers. The Education Bureau says that we have a lot of money. The problem is that we don't know how much resources are needed to deal with our manpower problem.
And students are also facing other problems, other than learning. For example, the growth problem, the emotional, the emotional problem, the family problems, et cetera. When the government launches new policies, it will involve teachers and schools. For example, poverty alleviation measures, as well as school drug tests, et cetera. So all these would add to the burden of teachers. So after the implementation of the N S S curriculum, the Education Bureau has reviewed a number of issues. For example, teaching hours, et cetera. However, it's not reviewed the manpower situation. Teachers are already overburdened. Who's going to launch the government's new education policies? And there is another important issue, that is, there is a gap in teacher succession. It's very difficult for young teachers to enter the profession. So a lot of young people will choose to work for other sectors. And in the future, when we really need teachers, I don't think we have enough teachers. If we do not have good teachers, how can we have good education? Just now, the secretary said that teachers generally, young teachers now generally enter the profession at twenty-seven. Now, who would wait till they're twenty-seven before they can become a teacher? They may already be working in other fields. Well, the first C E said that we have to catch up with the U K and the U S. Last time when I was at Latchco meeting, I had some comparative figures between us and Japan and Korea. And today, some principals compare ourselves with Macau. This is really scary. Well, even though we want to save money, we cannot save money on education. Hong Kong has a huge reserve. If Hong Kong is less competitive in the future, how much resources will be put in education? And I think we cannot compare with our neighboring places. For establishments, we have been facing the same problem. That is, we do not have enough workshop teachers. A review began in two oh oh nine, on the twenty-second of June this year. We got a circular from the Education Bureau. It said that this review will be delayed for one year. So over the past five years, we have been doing a lot of work, and I hope that this would not happen to teach, to schools again. I hope a committee can be set up so that teacher establishment can be reviewed as soon as possible, and a timetable should be set so that the class-to-teacher ratio can be enhanced and students can benefit. Next, Ms. Wong Hong-Lin from Education and Police General Union. Thank you, good morning. Now, it takes ten years to grow the plant a tree, and it takes one hundred years to nurture a student. Now, I would like to tell Mr. Eddie this. We need a committed, forward-looking and long-term education policy. However, when we look at the government or the Education Bureau's papers submitted to the Latchco, we discover that the Education Bureau has not provided a long-term planning concerning class-to-teacher ratio. It doesn't even have a draft plan. This really disappoints the teaching profession. In particular, we have young members in our General Union. After teaching for many years, they are still T A. This really doubts a serious blow at them. The papers are about temporary policies, time-limited grants, all these can end any time. And for the government responsible, for the government officials responsible to this, they are still playing with rhetorics, they are not answering questions properly. Well, the public and the education sector both think this are urgent matters. But the Education Bureau has turned a blind eye to it. We have very strong aspirations. However, the Education Bureau has turned a deaf ear to our voices. This is not conducive to the long-term development of Hong Kong society. The present C E in his policy address said that administrative support to schools should be increased appropriately, and teacher establishment should be optimized. So the Education Bureau staff should follow the C E's instructions. So for the administrative support for schools as well as class-to-teacher ratio, committed planning should be made. However, after reading the above-mentioned papers, our General Union does not see the Education Bureau's resolve in doing this. Education is not a commercial activity. Education affects people. It is a conscientious mission. It takes time and space before we can attain any achievement. It is not like doing a business. So we should ease the burden on teachers. We should give teachers more space. This is really very urgent. So our General Union would like to make two proposals. First, set up a planning committee on class-to-teacher ratio. Teachers' experiences are very important, and the training of teachers is also significant. Moreover, we are talking about young people's golden years. This is a precious time for them to study. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. And society may have to pay heavily. Mr. Ng, do you think you can still drag your feet? Now, we have enough campuses and manpower. It's the best time to revise the class-to-teacher ratio so that students can benefit and we can give full play to the potential of young teachers. And this will also benefits the long-term development of Hong Kong. Now, we have all the resources. What are you waiting for, Mr. Ng? Let me reiterate. This is a rare opportunity not to be missed. If we miss this opportunity, society will have to pay a higher price in the future. And this is a dereliction of duties on the part of the present government officials. If you do not do it today, when will you do it? Second, increasing administrative support for schools. Well, we can look at the A O admin level, and this kind of post, for example, G M admin, A O admin, G M admin, et cetera, all these posts can be increased so they can do the administrative work for schools. These are non-teaching posts. Well, so that, after increasing such posts, teachers can focus on teaching, and they can work together with their students. Thank you. Wong Tai-sin District Secondary School Heads Association, Ms. Lau Yiu-Hong. Chairman, Secretary, Members, good morning. Just now, I heard the views of the representatives, and I remember that the last time I came here was November last year. Some principals also expressed the same views last time. Today, we have a typhoon. Actually, we should go back to our school and see if everything's safe and fine on our campus. However, many principals choose to come to the Latchco today. They want to tell you our concerns, and we want members to understand what our situation is. Before I speak, I would like to say this. I have been looking at education reform and what are we aiming at? In the year two thousand, the administration issued a proposal on education reform. It covers curriculum, assessment, all kinds of reforms. So in the past decade, a number of reforms have been implemented. Now, teachers and students are facing all these significant reforms. In the future, there will also be a number of changes. Just now, we have heard from different principals about this. Well, when it comes to training talents for the twenty-first century, we understand that the government has a vision. And in this report, we also saw that the government has thought about the changes that would be caused to different stakeholders. It has also considered the teaching paradigm shift and also students' learning abilities, et cetera. So this report was a comprehensive one. However, because it involves many reforms, this may mean a huge burden on teachers. And at that time, they teach, the education sector was very worried. So what is the situation today? From, for two thousand and nine, the N S S curriculum has been implemented, and now teachers have to take care of different issues, including the diverse learning abilities of students, et cetera. And schools have to provide different curriculums. For example, whole-person teaching and also group teachings. And also, they have to do a lot of school-based assessment work. Now, our curriculum are so very broad and deep, et cetera. So teachers would have to do a lot of work after that, other than their teaching duties. And they would have to spend extra time on meetings. We have to prepare our teaching materials together, et cetera. So for all these reforms, they have entailed a lot of work, no matter whether it's teaching or non-teaching duties. And we are very concerned about this because now teachers cannot focus on teaching. This is really worrying. Ten years have passed. We are, we have to ask this question. Are all the reforms on the right track? Are our students' quality higher? So have these reforms brought about more space for our students, or they are just trained for examinations? Have schools been providing rooms for teachers to improve themselves and for students to learn better? And is full play given to the potential of teachers? I understand that extra resources have been given to schools so that in the initial stage of such reforms, schools can work better.
Because of the N S S, the Education Bureau has adjusted the ratio for calculating manpower. But the Bureau has not explained the grounds for the change. And is the calculation in line with the reality? Has the administration taken into account the needs of students? I think it's time to conduct a review. In recent two years, we've visited Shandong, Guangzhou. They are conducting a reform in the classroom. In the mainland, the teachers have a lot of room. They can do a lot of discussion on improving their pedagogy. Now, we have come to a crucial stage of education reform. Should we not provide, provide space to the teachers so that they can further, they can move forward? Our neighboring territories are competing with us, and they're enhancing their competitiveness. In Shandong, we've noticed that Shandong is rising in its competitiveness. But what about Hong Kong? We need to nurture our manpower resources. The government has to change its thinking so that our competitiveness can be maintained. We urge the government to start a mechanism to review the overall manpower situation of the schools and provide favorable conditions to the schools so as to ensure sustainable development of Hong Kong. Next is Mr. Wong Yip of the Hong Kong Liberal Studies Organization. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the panel, good morning, colleagues. Only eighteen percent of the students can go to the university after D S E. So eighty percent cannot go into the universities. But we need to make sure that all the students can have a good prospect, even if they can't get into the universities. Liberal Party, Liberal Studies play a very important role. We encourage a pluralistic approach in thinking. We encourage multi-level thinking. We encourage students to form their own view. We don't just target at the content of knowledge. We bring current affairs to the students. We enable students to adopt a three-dimensional approach in looking at issues. They will not be biased. We enlighten students in their thinking. We need to train students in thinking and assess them. We encourage students to engage in learning independently. I teach three Form Six classes. I have to deal with ninety, nearly ninety I E S. The schools make use of the grants given by schools, given by the Education Bureau, such as the L S C S G. But it's a pity that this support grant will be terminated. There aren't enough resources to deal with group teaching. And many schools will not make use of school-based And many schools will not make use of school-based grants to support liberal studies. If we are to nurture young people that can rise to challenges of globalization, we really need to enhance liberal studies. We have to make education reform a success and that requires resources. The Education Bureau will stop the giving of the L S C S G and also other time-limited grants. This only causes attrition within the schools and cause a division within the schools. Because of the education problems in the United States, the students have lost their American dream. I hope Hong Kong will not repeat that mistake. I hope the Education Bureau will listen to the views of our colleagues. We don't belong to a union. We are not asking for reducing our workload or asking for job security. We have a shared belief. We need to work for our future generation. Please consider this class teacher ratio very seriously. Please reduce the C T ratio so that there can be a better group teaching and better support for the students. We don't want a non-regular grant. Say we have the L S C S G. We use the money to employ a teaching assistant. The monthly salary is $15,000 and then together with M P F, less than $180,000 per year. How much do you pay your assistant legislators? If you really want to enhance the manpower of the teaching, enhance the manpower of the schools, you really need to give us more resources to employ regular teachers. As said by Mr. Ho, the school principal. If we hoard money unlawfully, you take the money away. Just give us more regular teachers. Next is Mr. Chen of the Hong Kong Professional Teachers Union. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. The H K P T U had a press briefing last week fighting for the increase of C T ratio and increase the number of teachers. Many are responding to our call. And we have this slogan of supporting young teachers. Scores of people attending the press meeting, attended the press briefing, including the graduates of the first general, first liberal studies course. The first batch of graduates of the liberal studies course. Now they are worried that they don't even get a job after they completed their four-year studies. Now the Education Bureau says that there are over 1,000 vacancies in the market. We go back to conduct a survey. We checked the newspaper, the two major newspapers, which carries classified ads. And from the 2nd of May to 11th of May, there are, there were advertisements of 419 teaching posts, but only nine. Nine, well, that's for recruiting regular teachers. Now if the teachers don't have certainty, if they don't know whether they have their jobs next year, what, will they be, have any, will they have any confidence in their future? And will not, will they have a high morale? There are many problems with our education system. Let us look at the numbers provided by the Education Bureau. They say that the C T ratio, or rather, the teacher to pupil ratio is 11.4 to 1. That includes contract teachers. That includes teachers employed by non-recurring funding. If we just count the regular teachers, then the ratio is 19.5 to 1. 19.5 students to one teacher. This is a bad figure in comparison, not only with the OECD countries, but also the Asian countries. They, now according to their number, Hong Kong teachers teach about 26 sessions per week. They say that that cannot reflect the workload of teachers. That's entirely right because the workload is far exceeding the number of sessions. Teachers have to take care of administrative work, even tendering exercises. They have to deal with all kinds of administrative work, not just teaching. We need to give relief to the teachers. Otherwise, there can't be any quality education at all. The number of sessions determine the time available for teachers to prepare for their classes, assess their students and care for their students. There is bigger and bigger variation among students within a class. And if teachers don't have enough time to care for students, then the student's growth and development will be jeopardized. If the administration just provides non-recurrent financial support to the schools, that will only cause uncertainty. Teachers will face uncertainty. Teacher graduates, teaching graduates will face uncertainty. Some contract teachers have worked for six or seven years without getting, without getting a firm employment. If 15% of the teachers face uncertainty about their jobs every year, then how can there be quality education? The present arrangement is not able to meet the education needs of Hong Kong. Any piecemeal measures means that the Education Bureau is short-sighted and without any backbone. The review should be conducted within this school year. The number of teachers should be increased. Administrative support, administrative support of schools should be enhanced. As for the contract teachers and also for the teaching graduates, there is a life and death issue. They say, for example, the E E S or R E E S or L S C S G, if they are not given, that will be a problem of unemployment. Next is Madame Lau, a school principal. Before the implementation of the N S S, the Education Bureau spoke to the school principals on calculation of the manpower establishment. And school principals said that the ratio was unreasonable. The officials said that we should be concerned about the common good. We should accept it. And then an undertaking was given that after implementation of N S S, there would be a review. Four or five years have elapsed. Many school councils or school heads associations have asked for the review. But up till now, there has been no review. If there is any review, it's only done in secret. And we are very furious. It affects our students and also the work of our teachers. If I'm too harsh, forgive me. Now, according to the paper submitted by the administration, it said that average number of sessions taught by teachers, 26 per week. And the Bureau says that is inaccurate. The length of sessions vary, the number of weeks varies. But I think the Education Bureau can provide a number of teaching hours. Why can't the Education Bureau provide the numbers and dodge the issue? Now you say 26 sessions, the number is difficult to compare with other places. There is the non, there is the non-pedagogical duties. If you look at the number of sessions, Hong Kong teachers have more number of sessions. If you count non-teaching duties, then it will be even a much heavier workload. If you've been to the mainland, if you conducted visits overseas, you know that the teaching hours of our teachers is the longest. That's a fact. Now the Education Bureau is wrong in thinking that giving short-term grants will solve the problem. So that's the same for administrative support. They have the School Administration Pilot Scheme. They say that there will be manpower to do administrative work, but it's only a pilot scheme, only 30 schools can benefit. It seems that after there is a pilot scheme, you don't need any recurring costs. You have a lot of papers, but you need people to implement your policy. Same for teaching. Say, for example, the L S C S G. It seems that you just give the money for a few years after framework is set up, then everything can go automatically. In the past 17 years, I've seen that the reforms have been proposed and they require implementation. Now the education reform is about the change in intellectual skills. The learning of intellectual skills is about training people to think and to learn. It's not just about content or knowledge. And our reform puts emphasis on diversification of experience. And we cannot just give you a C D ROM and then you watch a video and that's the end of the story. We need to do a lot of coordination, design, activities, accompany the students to go through the experience and then lead the students in reflecting on their experience.
All this would incur recurrence cost. If the government evades this and if it just continues to give us grants for this and that, I think this is not going to achieve anything. I have been sharing my views with other teachers and principals. I've been working in this field for 17 years. And I have told them that if you want to do a reform, don't do it immediately. You have to consider all the factors involved because a lot of people will be under great pressure if you carry out this kind of reforms. And some of them may even leave their jobs because of this. So this is not a problem that can be resolved by short-term funding. We are in the education profession for a long term. We are not just talking about short-term things. And another thing is, well, what is Hong Kong's future? We are facing aging population and also a drop in birth rate. So for our next generation or next two generations, it means that in the future, there will be a small workforce, but they have to support the whole society. It's not like my generation. I have eight siblings and we are supporting our parents together. So in the future, it will be totally different. So while we are facing this demographic issue, we should train up a strong next generation. Now for our young teachers, those in their 20s and 30s, they cannot be committed under such an environment. Now they do not trust the management. And also for this young generation, if they like this, how can they train up the even younger generation? Now we have government officials here, legislators here, the school sector here. I think these three parties should join hands instead of confronting each other. Next, Dr. Qiu Ying-hua from Hong Kong U.
Yes, I'm an associate professor in the School of Education of Hong Kong U, but I do not speak on behalf of my school. I have consulted some of my colleagues. People will ask, how come you are here? Actually, I have not been adopting a high profile in the past. But in the past four years, I have made a lot of effort in this area. That is, I have been leading a group of liberal study students. Some of them have already found a job, but that's just a minority. For the majority of them, well, maybe some would send out hundreds of letters. He doesn't even get one single interview. Lately, I've been to a P T A press conference and I was very emotional at that time. The reason behind that is that now I find that our students are looking for other jobs. It means that I have wasted my efforts. However, from that P C, I also got to understand that for many T A's in schools, now they're actually facing a very serious, a serious problem. And that's why my students are facing this obstacle. Now because in the coming year, the E D B will be scrapping many grants for schools. And I would like to look at this issue from another perspective. I'm not just trying to protect my students. Now when we talk about public money or money spent on education or government's decisions, well, of course, there will be people benefiting and people suffering from new initiatives. Our government decision cannot please all the people. So we have to look at these issues rationally. And how do we do that? We have to look at the whole society. We have agreed on an education direction. In some countries, it is a piece of legislation or it's a resolution passed by that country's parliament. Because this kind of policy is about the whole society, it's not just about my students. Now this is for the whole society. The whole society should have discussed and then come to a decision. So a certain political party or a certain elected government cannot change it because this represents the commitment of the whole society. Yes, it can be changed, but there must be thorough discussions and debates. And also, there must be enough justifications for the change. This is a rational process that we have to go through if we want to make major changes. And a government or when a parliament passes a resolution, it has to consider justice. We cannot say that our goals are good. So that's why we can do it by whatever means. Now for policy, for direction, we all know that after 1997, we have already set a policy direction. That is to reduce the number of public examinations. This is not something decided by a certain person. It's decided on after thorough discussion. So that's why there was major changes to the curriculum. So we have the responsibility to do this. No matter whether it's Mr. Eddie Ng or other teachers or principals here, we have the responsibilities to carry it through, to do the best. For an education minister, what, I've looked at for four minutes already? Sorry. For an education minister, he can follow a direction. However, if the country does not have enough budget, then maybe he can slow down a bit. But I have never seen an education minister like this. That is, he would destroy the most important element in education. After the Second World War, many countries have made reforms to their education. And they all think that teachers are the most important. Chairman Lam, can you give me more time to speak? I didn't know that I have spoken for four minutes already. Yes, I can give you two more minutes. Oh, for this huge change, it is like starving a newborn baby. So what is the government doing? We have to look at the facts. There are young teachers working in schools, but we are so unfair to them. Well, I cannot get as much data as the EDB. I just look at the annual budget that's submitted to the legislature. Well, these this is just like our census. These people are not human beings. They are not teachers. And you are just covering up your injustice. If you look at this table, you will know. Well, during the reform, things look stable, but after the reform, you just cut all the fundings and grants. If we do not treat our next generation well, then we will not have a good future. And what will our future be like? Our next generation will maltreat their next generation or they will revolt against us. This is the consequence. Well, HR experts remind me of one thing. Well, why do companies need HR? They want to do merging. They want to lay off their staff and then these are HR experts will become very important. Now, is it because that we are seeing a drop in our population, that's why we need an HR expert to head our Education Bureau? Well, let me finish this. Well, can you go back to the class and teacher ratio? Now, if we do not conduct a study on class to teacher ratio and then we cut the grants for secondary schools, then this is totally unacceptable. Because this, the ratio has a huge impact on education and you do not review it and then you start doing something else. You are cutting the resources. Are you going to stifle the implementation of the new curriculum? Thank you. I would like to thank the individuals and deputations for coming to today's meeting again. You have given us a lot of professional views. And many of you read from your speaking notes. If you have a speaking notes, please leave us a copy because we want to make reference to it. Now, for class to teacher ratio and teachers workload, they are very important for education. So we are holding this meeting today. This is a platform for schools and government officials to communicate. Later on, I'll ask the secretary to respond to the remarks made by the deputations. And to enhance our public hearings quality, I hope the secretary can be more focused and succinct when he speak. Well, a lot of deputations hope that well, want to know when the government will conduct a review on teachers workload, class to teacher ratio, et cetera. And such a review should be fair and just open and transparent. And some deputations also asked for the setting up of a committee to carry out this review. Some deputations said that under the NSS curriculum, what kind of formula does the government use to calculate the class to teacher ratio? And under the NAS, some deputations said that the calculation of class to teacher ratio is calculated in accordance with an old formula under the old system. So can the administration also clarify this point? Let us ask the secretary to respond now. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to thank the deputations again.
I thank them for giving their views and sharing their experience with us. Let me clarify certain facts. I do care for young teaching graduates as to whether they are able to find jobs. I said that I talked to the colleagues of the Institute of Education or Faculty of Education colleagues and I asked them the situation of their graduates in finding jobs. Say, a big school of education told me that more than ninety percent of the students were able to get jobs. There was no problem. They want to increase the number of students in their classes so that they can recruit more students. I just want to find a balance in terms of letting fresh graduates to find their jobs. Now, it said that there are few vacancies. We discussed the number of contract employees. Now, in the first week of May, the number was, in the first week of May. I said that in April and May, the schools started to put up ads. I gave the number from the first of June to the seventh of June, one oh five oh vacancies in the schools. I looked at the webpage. Two days ago, the number one oh four oh vacancies, thirty-six, were vacancies for liberal studies. I have no intention to argue on the nature of job, but there are job opportunities. These are the facts. Now, you, you put emphasis on regular teachers. Now, in talking with the school principals, there are regular teacher openings. But for one reason or another, the schools do not recruit them under the regular establishment. We encourage the schools to recruit teachers into the regular establishment. Teachers want to work in a stable environment. As for the Administration Pilot Scheme, we want to find out whether adding one or two administrative posts is needed by the schools. In a pilot scheme, different schools have different experience. In the twenty twelve thirteen school year, that is a different approach. We will provide a certain assistance to the schools so that schools can have the flexibility. I am studying the report. And then when we make a decision, it can be evidence-based. As for class teacher ratio, I look into that specifically. At previous meetings, members asked me to consider the number of sessions taught by teachers. I'm looking into that. When I went to Korea, I asked the same question. Why I mention Korea? A person in analyzing the performance of the schools, number one is Finland, number two, Korea, number three, Hong Kong. Respect towards the teachers is one of the reasons for their studies. Forty minutes, twenty-six sessions, hours, forty-five minutes, twenty-six sessions. We need to be scientific in understanding the ratios. Now, our current situation is that, is this regular establishment is part of the manpower, a substantial chunk of manpower. In talking with the school heads associations, some asked for flexibility. Say, for example, the NSS grant, or rather senior secondary grant is one example. The one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the LSCSG is for four years, is for the implementation of the liberal, is for liberal studies for implementation for the first four years. We've, we stated that very clearly at the start. Now, will you speak on the class to teacher ratio? Will you conduct a review? I'm still listening to different views. I talked to the school heads association. I'm discussing that with them. I want to know your understanding or your concern. There are two major points. The study on teachers workload done by Dr. Ko is also being considered. The, the Education Commission, we're looking to that. I open the floor to members. I'd like to know how many members want to ask questions. A show of hands, please. Now, the members are Chongkochu, Tam Yuchong, Ma Fengkou, Sid Ho, Kenneth Chan, Yip Kin Yun, Brazil Aleng. Who else? Who else? Okay. Seven excluding myself. Who else? Anymore? First round, four minutes, questions and answers together. First, Mr. Chongkochu. It's unfair. The guest speakers have five minutes and we only have four minutes. Well, I may give you a second round if we have time. Well, I respect your decision. In the past month, we have heard the complaints of parents. And today, we've heard the views of the school teachers and principals. The parents are more inclined towards the emotional aspect, whereas the teachers and school principals are more rational. They all tell us our education system is in trouble. There are a lot of problems with our education system. They mentioned OLE, liberal studies, NSS, school-based, district-based, integrated education, so on and so forth. The government officials are working very hard to do their job. What should integration education be? What should curriculum reform be? Everything looks good in its, in its own. And they don't think about resources. They don't think about how many people are needed to do the job well. And they don't know, they don't, they don't tell people how many teachers are needed. Everything is put on the plate of the school principal and the teachers. They are to deliver the goods. They have, they face the expectation of the parents and they face expectations of themselves. The Education Bureau says that that's a budget. So you just make use of your resources to meet all these expectations. I think it's duty of the Policy Secretary and also the Permanent Secretary. You have the political responsibility as a Permanent Secretary. We don't have a Permanent Secretary with us. The Permanent Secretary is the civil servant who looks at the budget, who looks at how the work should be done. They ask for, the, the schools ask for reviewing the establishments. You say you look, you need more surveys. You look at the survey results. We have been asking for the review for twenty years. You, you are a new boy. You say there should be a study, but they have been doing it for more than twenty years. We have to deal with the fire. We have to fight fire. You should raise the ratio to two point, two point zero per class. No distinction between junior or senior secondary. Listen. Now, I've just said that now, from the perspective of manpower resources, we should deal with it from the perspective of professional manpower management. Now, there is, there are changes, expectations of parents. There are changes in student variation. It's not about, third, it's not about hard knowledge, it's soft knowledge. And there are changes to pedagogic approaches. It's not just a single number. We need reform. We need review. Let him finish. I'm looking at the issue seriously. I've heard, in, in fact, within the schools, there are two different views. Give me the money, I do it. Or the other view is you lump it on establishment altogether. And what is the impact of OLE? If time permits, I'll speak on what's been done under NSS and what is being done under NSS. Mr. Tam Yuchong. Thank you, Chairman. I think the deputations are coming. I think a teacher, school principal is coming, for coming and tell us their difficulties and their situation and also they demand changes. There are problems in education always. Because education is about human beings and there are changes. The government has to make adjustment. And it's good to listen to views. It's, it's necessary to listen to different kinds of views. And then afterwards, one should think about improvement. As for the bureau, who should come and who comes and who does not come is their business. After the bureau has heard the matter, the bureau should consider the matter positively. The most important, the most important thing is that they shouldn't drop any plan behind closed doors. And their policy should be fair and reasonable. Use of resources should be reasonable and fair to students and teachers. It's true that teachers are facing a lot of pressure. How can we help them to reduce the pressure? Should we reduce the number of sessions? Should we reduce the number of students per class? Should we increase the number of administrative staff? Should we do all three or what about the wait? What about the waiting between the three? We really need to know the real situation, having heard the views. As for less experience and young teachers are not able to find jobs, that's something we should consider very seriously. And job security is also important. If you face uncertain, if teachers face uncertainty, how can they do their best in teaching the students? That's the view of the DAB. Thank you. Any response from Mr. Ng? Two points. Yes, certainty is very important. With the permission or with the support of the panel, we do our best. We spend a lot of money to safeguard the schools and the teachers. And in fact, we've done something about it. And as for the excess teachers, how can they make use of their time to conduct further, to pursue further studies and to reorganize their career? That is also important. Now apart from putting your questions to Mr. Ng, you can also put your question to the deputations so as to exchange views with them. Next, Ms. Ma Feng Kwok. I've been listening very carefully to the speakers. In particular, Dr. Key mentioned dealing with the matter rationally. I've looked at Mr. Key's submission. Probably he's, he has not made good use of his time. So I will give my time to him so that he can state his viewpoint rationally.
Professor Key, you have three minutes, thirty seconds. Chairman, I'm grateful that I have this opportunity. Now if you say that is very difficult for you, it's difficult for other people. If you don't have money, other people don't have money either. Well, what I mean by being rational is that you have to follow your policy. Our government has to follow its policy. Now if he has decided on a policy, well, it has consulted a lot of people. It's made a commitment, so there must be continuity. Well, the government now suddenly withdraws its original policy. So you're aiming at a goal and the whole society agreed on the goal already. So that's why it has shot, sent a shock wave across the community. So I'm telling the facts. Well, we all see this. This is the most significant change in the education sector. I think it has dealt a blow on us. If there is not a committee handling this fairly and then such policies are launched, for example, cancelling certain grants, et cetera, then I think there will be a huge problem. And also there is this succession gap. It does exist. The E D B is providing us with some information, but I don't think that can answer the question. Actually, this is a very simple on, question. Now according to the establishment, they point out, they talk about twenty-three or twenty-four thousand. So how many years have this been, these people been serving the education sector? It's very easy to find. So why can't you give us these figures? So that the public can look at it. You don't just give us one or two figures. You have to give us a systematic set of figures. I still have time, the secretary can also answer you. And also now we have less population. Does it mean that the funding for education should also be cut? Well, originally to, well, in the old days, the parents would give birth to two children and now one child. So are you, will the parents cut half of the education funds? Now in the past, two adults, maybe only one adult worked. Now both the adults will work. And now they're having less children. However, their expectations of the child will be higher. So you should think this way. If you just stick to the traditional ratio, it's wrong. Because it was calculated in accordance with the old ways of teaching, the old pedagogical methods. And that cannot meet the expectations of modern day parents. If you do this, you are letting both the parents and the students down. Secretary? Thank you Professor. You are right. We have to conduct reviews all the time. Just now I said that we, we try to listen to as many views as possible. And this will be further discussed by the Education Commission. And you also talked about the falling population. Now, I agree with you. In, from oh eight to oh nine, as well as twenty twelve to thirteen, the S one population dropped from seventy thousand to sixty thousand. Our investment per unit has been increased by twenty-five percent. Yes, the population has dropped, but we have not changed our investment. Mr. Ho? I would like to thank the deputations for coming here today to share with us their professional views and tell us what difficulties they are facing. Thank you. Secretary, I would like to put two questions to you, but I'm sure you cannot answer my questions. First, about teaching periods. You say that in Korea, they have twenty-six teaching periods. Mr. Yip Kin Yun showed me a timetable of a teacher. Eight, eight, eight A M to three forty-five P M. He has to keep on teaching and then he has to go to teaching meetings and he has to lead extracurricular activities. Just now Principal Ho told us that when we are compared with Taiwan and Macau for a classmaster, sixteen sessions, non-classmasters, twenty sessions. So for the actual timetable of a teacher, no, it's not twenty-six teaching periods. So please take a look again at your data. For contract teachers, as Ms. Wong Soo Yook said just now, they change every year. So is this conducive to the students? If not, how come contract teachers, well, some contract teachers, teachers have been working for six or seven years and still they cannot become regular teachers? Because indeed, we need manpower. Oh, you have paid money already. And of course, contract teachers are paid much lower. Are you exploiting new graduates? But actually, this has a negative impact on the students. And in Finland, the teachers would follow a child or a student when he grows up all the way. Let us not talk about this major issues. Let us talk about some trivial things. One hundred and sixty thousand dollars as liberal studies grant. And this will only last for three years, four years. And you're saying that after four years, this will end. So what is meant by the initiation period? You know, you have to prepare for the teaching materials. You have to do a lot of things. However, for liberal studies, the teaching materials change from year to year or even from day to day. Well, earlier on, we talked about throwing bananas. Today, we won't talk about throwing banana. We will talk about occupying central. So you have to renew the teaching material. You cannot use the news ten years ago. And how about learning beyond classrooms? So for that one hundred and sixty thousand grants, it cannot be withdrawn? Well, for teachers and principals here, I think I really cannot talk about grant issues with our government officials. We are just talking about trivial things here. The L C, L S C S G cannot be stopped because it does not only last, the liberal study subject does not only last for four years. Secretary, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, how do you deal with it? Now there are still three hundred and twenty schools. They're like this, according to our eleven and twelve data, about three hundred and twenty schools still have surplus in this area. As for regular teachers, now we have just sent a memo to eighty, eight schools, reminding them that now there are many contract teachers holding regular posts. So we want them to employ more regular teachers. Well, let, let's talk about the surplus. Well, let's, the secretary finish first. Can you let me chair the, the meeting? I'll just say one word, Chairman. Just now a principal asked, how come a school wants to keep a reserve? Because it doesn't know what changes you will initiate in the future. It has no confidence in you. Next, Mr. Chan Kahlak. How can you make people trust you? Mr. Chan Kahlak.
Good morning. I would like to thank you for coming to the Lashco to vent your grievances. I can feel your anger because I'm also a member of the education sector. I can feel your grievance. I can feel your commitment for your students. And you are the frontline education practitioners. Well Chairman, I think the government, if it wants to set up a committee to review this or review that, it's not difficult. You have seen that this government has already set up numerous committees. For example, Finance Development Authority and different committees, et cetera. I saw, I find it very strange. Well, the deputations asked you to conduct a review. You first you gave, you show them some figures and then you say that these figures are not worthy of consideration, et cetera. And then when they give you some figures, you say that, well, these figures are not valid. All the graduates can find a job, et cetera. So we've heard a lot of rhetorics like this. Well, it doesn't matter. Well, you tell your story and they tell their story and then nobody knows what the truth is. And where can we find Professor Ko Yin Ming? He left in April last year. Well, can you go back to the Education Commission and try to find all the relevant information? Well, this is always my attitude. Well, when you talk to this secretary, you will know what his response is like. So today I'll change my method. Oh, we are handling a Hong Kong style class to teacher ratio. Well, he has visited many countries, but he says that Hong Kong is a very special place. Now, the government has done a lot of extra things for the education sector. Well, where can you find a government that will find jobs for students? So they are already doing a very good job. Now they are looking for recruitment advertisements for the students. Well, it doesn't matter if you can find a job. You can go to a tutorial school, maybe you can get rich. And if you talk about liberal studies, the grant has to continue. He will think that, well, in initial stage, I've already helped you. And then you can just recycle your teaching materials or you can just patch up here or there, fine tune something. You, you can do it. So just use up the remaining surplus and then ask me again. This is the government's attitude. Well, are there twenty-four hours a day? No, in Hong Kong's education sector, there are at least seventy-two hours a day. So you're in the teaching sector, you have to shoulder all these responsibilities. This is this government's attitude. Now you want to reason with the government, it leads you down the garden path. So what can we do? Going on a strike? Join a demonstration? Well, Chairman, today we are trying to be courteous. We just want the government to set up a committee to review this. Give us some time to talk about it. They are very rational. Because they are genuine educational practitioners. Next, Vice Chairman, Mr. Yip Kin Yun.
Mr. Chan Kahlak, you spoke so well. We are very humble. And I would like to thank my friends for coming here today. We are not trying to start a riot. We are not trying to do anything radical. We are trying to reason with you. We are just making a request. Is it possible for you to seriously review the class to teacher ratios so that it can be improved, so that teachers can do a better job? There are many people here, but they all have the same views. If the governments take them seriously, you would know that such requests are very reasonable. Now, say, for example, if a child is wearing clothes and his clothes are big enough, but the child is growing. And then comes the N A S and S S S. He grows up very rapidly since in his adolescence. Now the clothes do not fit. So we try to patch up with contract teachers. These patches can be used flexibly and they can dump, they can be dumped anytime. And this year, even these patches are gone. Because the grants will end. And this child is, or this young person is still wearing his child's clothes. So is it a good way of developing education? I think we have made our point very clear. The secretary has given us a lot of figures and they only serve to confuse us. For example, over ninety percent of I A T graduates can find a job. But what kind of job is that? Well, they can be teaching in tutorial schools.
We've asked about the job ads. What sort of jobs are advertised? I don't doubt the total. I, I, I don't, I don't doubt the number. Even if I don't doubt the number, I want to know the categories, the kinds of jobs. The point is, what is your attitude towards education? What is your attitude towards the young people? We cannot ask for any special treatment for young people, special treatment for education. But we are especially bad toward treating, in treating our young people. We have the contract teacher grade and we have the teaching aid grade. We cut the starting salary to a bare minimum. And we tell the young teacher that you can choose whether you continue with this or not. How can there be sustainable development in education? How can we attract talented young people to receive teacher education and become teachers? If there is a gap in the teaching manpower, in the teaching manpower, then society will bear the cost. Your intriguing numbers cannot hide the facts. After a few months with a new, in a new school year, all these troubles, problems will appear. I have a motion. This is just a humble request, part of humble request. Thank you. Now, members who are still on the list for the first round are as follows. Priscilla Leung, Tommy Cheung, Lan Kwok Hong, Helena Wong. First round, four members. Priscilla Leung. Thank you. The C T ratio is something we understand. The deputations want us to consider the interests of our future generations. We may not see eye to eye with each other on many issues, but we need to care for the education of our future generations. Four years ago, I was the Vice Chairman of the Education Panel. At that time, we started to discuss liberal studies. I'm of the view that liberal studies should not be compulsory. Recently, there are problems with the exam questions. But that's not the beginning. I, I wasn't so late in pointing out the problem. I've received many complaints in respect of liberal studies. Mr. Wong. Now, I'd like to remind you that this about C T ratio. Yes, I'm about to speak on this. Chairman, please do not interrupt me. On the twenty-sixth of April, a parent mentioned the problem with mentioned the uh problem with liberal studies and the uh problems he has his son face. Now, his son uh told the parent that after the age of eighteen, I don't need to care for you. The parents uh tell the child that after eighteen, I'm not going to support you to go into the university. What are they doing in liberal studies? Many parents are concerned. The last speaker asked for evidence. We've received a lot of calls for help. Would you speak on class teacher ratio, please? Let me finish. Many teachers ask for freedom of drawing up teaching materials for liberal studies. Let's don't talk about occupying central. We are willing to give resources, but it's a matter of quality. Can there be public supervision on the teaching materials? And also the quality of teachers? And they are able to meet the expectations of society at large. Many parents have such worries and they are true, and they are facts. Let's don't talk about politics. There are many such cases. I just want to ask the administration, if we continue to give them resources, how can we supervise them? Ms. Leng, we are talking about class teacher ratio. Please speak to the question. Now they say they don't have resources. No, 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 absolutely not. Okay, ask your question. As for the quality of teachers, you are fighting for better C T ratio, nobody is against it. We have to agree. And we should give resources to you and give you relief. Yes, okay, thank you for your view. Uh, the secretary has no time to reply. Mr. Tommy Cheung.
Well, um, I can finish within four minutes easily. I thank the representatives of the education sector for coming. You give up going back to yours, uh, to your school, inspecting your school during the typhoon. I, I thank you for coming during the typhoon. Um, the chairman, you keep reminding our colleague that this is about C T ratio. I have nothing to speak on, uh, nothing much to speak on C T ratio, but I've heard a lot of views today. As for Hong Kong's education in particular, school education, uh, is something that has been much criticized. Now with the N S S three-three-four system, many parents have voted with their feet. For those who can afford, they send their student, they, they send their children overseas. We've talked about small class education. We keep talking about small class when population goes down. In particular, Mr. Chairman Kwan, Mr. Sitoua spoke a lot on small class teaching. Um, the, the objective is to provide job security to the teachers. Via small class teaching, they are on, they were on moral high ground, people wanted this. Now, now we have a good um teacher pupil ratio and now we change it to C T ratio. Um, I don't know how to do it. Uh, the twenty-odd sessions are too many. Now, when we talk about small class teaching, I reminded members that teachers might teach more sessions. But I don't need any answer from the secretary. I'm a parent too. Uh, my grandchildren will soon uh go to study in primary schools. We spend a lot of money on, on education. Now we have a problem with, with our education. Should we put the blame, put all the blame on the policy secretary? Now, if you, uh, say ten years ago, the policy secretaries, permanent, permanent secretaries were very hardworking, introduced a lot of reforms and caused conflicts with teachers and school principals. Let's don't talk about universities. Our school education has a lot of problems. I don't think the question is not whether the um new, the uh policy secretary is a um new boy or, or there are problems with the um officials of the, of the Education Bureau. Now concerning the less and less regular teachers, you have to ask the school principals. If the school, if the teachers have been, uh, are put in the irregular establishment, it will be difficult to dismiss them. So they need to watch the teachers, the new recruits for a longer time. Education reform shouldn't just be limited to one matter. Now the Vice Chairman says that the measures are piecemeal. Now today we discuss a C T ratio and when we have a good C T ratio, um, just like when we have a better T P ratio now, uh, and they, and you move the goalposts. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tommy Cheung. Next, Mr. Leng Kwok Hong. Mr. Leng Kwok Hong on C T ratio, please. Yes, um, uh, beating retreat. Well, it's just for uh reference. I think the objectives of the education reform are wrong. Anthony Leng is a businessman. He became the financial secretary later. C Y Tong asked him to conduct education reforms. And he thought that he was all powerful. He thought that education was an investment. He just stating the obvious, just like stating the obvious. And if it is an investment, that must be value for money. And then education becomes business. He pays, but he give you one dollar and asks for a return of four dollars. The question is, he has given you more money. Anthony Leng likes to talk very, um, very much. He gives you one dollar and asks you for four dollars in return. And Arthur Lee liked to play with um computer games. He liked to play computer games, um, like Mr. Edding. And then uh his permanent secretary uh was Fanny Law and she caused a whole lot of troubles. And after, after Lee, uh, there came Michael Shin. Well, please speak on the C T ratio. It's not an assessment of the uh secretaries. I'm talking about C T ratio, not a retreat. It's a retreat. It's not talking about a retreat. Class teacher ratio, please. Uh, it's all the same, teacher pupil ratio or class teacher ratio. It's all the same. When you talk about teacher pupil ratio, they say C T ratio. What is the purpose of school education? What is the purpose of school education? Michael Shin was just sitting on his hands. He had to receive renal dialysis every day. He really couldn't do much. Now, Mr. C Y Leng have to stop you if you don't speak to C T ratio, not retreat ratio, okay? Yes, we need to speak on manpower. We need to speak on leadership. The government is about leadership. You can't formulate new policies because of three major obstacles. Fanny Law is still a member of the Executive Council and she can continue uh to influence the C E. You can't influence the C E. Uh, do you attend the Exco meeting? You just called, you're just called to attend the Exco meeting. You are not a regular member. Now you say that expenditure on education uh in proportion to the government budget is increased. But there is a decline of education expenditure in respect of G D P. So if you in, you invest one dollar and ask for a return of four dollars, then you really can't change the C T ratio. Okay, thank you for your view. Two more members, Helena Wong and then Mrs. Regina Yip. Helena Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, after graduation, my first job was teaching at a secondary school. I taught language and religion. At that time, it was really difficult because I had to work seven days a week and every day I had to work overtime. But at that time, we didn't have all sorts of reforms. Uh, we didn't have all this self-assessment, assessing others, S B A, etc. At that time, I found it too difficult, so I left my job. And today I'm surprised to find that so many people still want to teach and to cope with your policies. Lately, parents have been talking to me. They talked about um direct subsidized schools. Well, some people would object to that and the objectors say, and some people say that is because um the schools do not have enough resources, so that they want to um be changed or to be converted to directly subsidized schools so that they can get more money and the um schools can work um with more resources. Actually, uh, yesterday I was at my alma mater at a graduation ceremony. Uh, I shook many people's hand and then the teachers complained to me. Is that, uh, Ms. Wong, um, next time we want to invite you to come again because they are going to uh have a fundraising event. So the principal and the teachers would have to do fundraising. They are not just teaching, they are not um just giving guidance to their students, they also have to raise funds. And then they would have enough money to recruit more people to fill their vacancies in the schools. So in kindergartens, primary schools, secondary schools and even universities, we can see things like that. And in secondary and primary schools, many teachers would want to leave. They want to look for jobs elsewhere. So why is our education like that? How come teachers are kept so busy? Uh, they should have a stable income and then they can focus on their teaching. Is Hong Kong really so poor? Well, when we are at the F C meetings, well, you can see that you um would donate one hundred million dollars, a government-to-government donation. Well, instantly. And yesterday, fifteen billion dollars was approved for the community fund. So what are you doing in education? I, in my times, I didn't remember teachers committing suicide. And lately, we've seen a number of cases and teachers would even jump off their school buildings and these are tragedies. Secretary. This is a common problem that we are facing. We do not want to see shortage of manpower in schools. Because when you launch a policies, schools may not have enough manpower to cope with your policies. No matter whether it's language policy, liberal studies, etc. In a school, four classes are taught in English and one class is taught in Chinese. And then one teacher would have to um prepare two sets of examination papers, one in English and one in Chinese. So it's like doubling the workload. I support Mr. Yip Kin Yuen's motion. Mrs. Regina Yip, thank you, Chairman. And I would like to thank the education practitioners for coming here to share with us their views. I have also um had complaints from teachers. I think fundamental education or basic education is very important. Yesterday, a journalism major student interviewed me. And he couldn't speak one sentence of English, uh, one sentence in English fluently. I think that's a problem with our basic education. I think the class to teacher ratio should be improved so that the quality of our education can be enhanced. And when we have more manpower, we can have smaller class classes, then teachers can focus on teaching. So the E D P should implement a relevance policy. You should not ask principals and teachers to do a lot of extra work. For example, all sorts of T S M assessments and um other administrative duties. As for the two colleagues' motions, I support Mr. Chen's motion. Well, we are not on that yet. Let's go back to class and teacher ratio. Well, in principle, I support that the C to T ratio be improved. In particular, when it comes to language teaching, if English is regarded as a foreign language, of course, it's a foreign language, it's not our mother tongue. If you look at other countries' quality education, if they allow to learn another country's language, then a lot of practice is required. And if there are more than twenty students in a class, they would at another class. Because you need a lot of attention from the teacher when it comes to teaching language. So I, in principle, I support improving the C to T ratio so that our basic education quality can be enhanced. Secretary, any response? I would like to thank the members for their questions. First of all, about C to T ratio, manpower pressure. And also there are a lot of external elements so that expectations and roles of schools keep on changing. Yes, we understand that. Well, earlier on, we have been discussing with principals and teachers as well. Lately, I also had some gatherings with teachers and I understand the situation. Well, we will bring your opinions back to the Education Commission. Well, for Professor Ko, he's a very good friend of mine. I would like to stress that I respect him a lot. He's a very objective person. So we would um go back to the previous studies and then we will carry on the job. Members, this meeting should end at twelve today. And we have two motions tabled. One is uh put forward by Mr. Yip Kin Yuen, the other by Mr. Chen Karlock. And I suggest that we lengthen the meeting by fifteen minutes to twelve fifteen. But uh I will not give you another round of questions because there have been a lengthy discussion. But today, um, this is a rare opportunity because we have so many deputations here and it's and um that's the typhoon outside. So I think there should be more communications. So before handling these motions, I would like to ask the deputations or the principals or the individuals, after listening to the secretary and members, do you still want to say anything? I don't know how many um of you will raise your hands, but please, um, speak uh for one minute at the maximum. Thank you. Who would like to speak? Or like to ask the clerk to put down your name first. Seven. So each one will be given one minute. Well, so, um, there will be a total of seven minutes. So let's listen to them first and then we will handle the motions first. Mr. Hau Man Tim.
Thank you. Just now I spoke for only five minutes. I would like to say something more. Now, uh, for the twenty-six uh teaching periods in Korea, because they haven't had a three-three-four reform like us. Now this is a complete overhaul. So, um, they So their situation cannot be compared with ours. And we only have one humble request, that is, you should start reviewing the class-to-teacher ratio immediately. Professor Ko in two thousand and six in his report, he said something, and actually, it doesn't work now because now we are facing a lot of problems. So if you have the time, please come to our schools and talk to our teachers. You will know how difficult their work is. And they even have to visit a clinic at night because they don't have time in the daytime. Mr. Hoi.
I would like to respond to what the secretary said just now of the advertisements or ninety percent of graduates being able to find a job, etc. As for the facts, I think you really have to look at it. Please look up, there are some students there. They are I A T graduates, and they want to come here to share their stories. If the fact is not like that, so what should we do? Well, you're saying that ninety percent of the graduates have found a job, and that means that our young teaching professionals can give play to their potential. No, that is not the case. So please tell us a more accurate truth next time.
Ms. Hall, Mr. Ho Simon. Secretary. Same as you, I respect Professor Ko a lot. He attaches a lot of importance to facts and objective figures. Well, other than revisiting Professor Ko's report, secretary, you should also look at our study reports, and I hope you can respond to the points made in those reports. Mr. Lam Yip Feng.
I hope the secretary will talk to the Education Commission, and you should have an in-depth discussion there. And afterwards, you should report to the education sector. That is, whether a review committee will be set up. And if you do, you should cooperate with the business sector. And if you do not want to set up such a committee, you have to tell us why. Now, this is a very precious opportunity that we can share our views here. Mr. Yu Fei.
First of all, I would like to respond to Mr. Eddie Ng. Professor Ng, whether he's your good friend or not, has nothing to do with this. And if you want to cite South Korea as an example, then you should really search your soul why Hong Kong is like this now. And also, forgot to what Mrs. Regina Ip said. Now, in the secondary schools with the N S S curriculum, the C to T ratio should be reconsidered. You should look at the new goals and principles. Because even if you make a small change, there will be a lot of changes follow. And what kind of quality do you want to achieve in terms of education? Otherwise, what are the teachers doing? They are putting their time and effort on unimportant issues. Ms. Lau.
I would like to add a point. Just now, Mrs. Regina Ip said something that's very important, that is about the crucial part of education. That is, how can we improve our classroom teaching? Now, we have to give teachers enough room and time to make improvement. So for all the principals here, we are now sending out the same message. That is, we want a review mechanism. You should really look at the actual situation in schools, and suitable persons should be put in suitable places.
Mr. Chong Yu Fei. I would like to make three points. Now, for the C to T ratio or teacher-to-student ratio, the most important thing is how much care can be given to a student by a teacher. In other words, if we have more teachers in school, then students can be taken care of in a better manner by teachers. This is very clear. And the government has the responsibility to explain to the public and to the education sector. That is, after withdrawing resources this year, how many posts will be lost in schools? And even my school would have to cut a teaching assistant post. So I think the government is duty bound to explain to the public. And also, for reviewing the C to T ratio, I think this is already a consensus of the education sector. And if the government does not do anything, then what's the meaning of us sitting here? Do you want us to take to the streets? Does anyone want to speak? No? Thank you.
I have two motions in front of me. The first one is moved by Ms. Yip Kin Yun. Well, the deputations don't have a copy. Mr. Yip's motion is that the panel urges the administration to review ways and means to improve the regular establishment of the schools as soon as possible and report to this panel on the progress or outcome of the review. The second motion is moved by Ms. Sitoh, and Ms. Ho's motion is that this panel is a view that the administration should continue to release one hundred and sixty thousand dollars of grant for liberal studies to give relief to the poor C T ratio and as soon as possible, increase the regular establishment of the teachers. I will not open this for discussion, but I just want to know whether the secretary would like to respond to these motions before I put these motions to the vote. Oh, yes, indeed. Concerning Mr. Yip's motion, the secretary has already said that he would ask the Education Commission to consider the workload of teachers. As for Ms. Sitoh's question, with regard to the one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we've heard the call. We have considered the views of different quarters. We are of the view that there is no justification to continue the grant of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What about Mr. Yip's motion? Yeah, he's already spoken on that. I want to ask members. Any amendment? Ms. Helena Wong, not to give your view. I want to amend the number. Not more, not less than, not less than one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Do you accept that? Yes, I welcome that. No less than one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, yeah? To implement, to provide the liberal studies support grant and increase the ratio, or the regular establishment. Okay, I don't argue for the numbers. The more, the better. Okay, I will put the questions to the vote. I will first put Mr. Yip's motion to the vote. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Those against, please raise your hands. Any abstention, please. All members unanimously agree, so the motion is carried. The next motion is Ms. Helena Wong's amendment. Those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. Any abstention, please. The motion of Ms. Sitoh, as amended by Ms. Helena Wong, is carried. This is the end of today's hearing. I would like to thank the deputations for coming amid the typhoon. And I hope the administration has heard you, and the administration will deal with this matter seriously and thereby contributing to the further development.